The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Council meeting of April fifteenth, two thousand fourteen.
Counselor Hirsar.
Present.
Counselor Kinsey is absent. Counselor Tontar.
Present.
Counselor Vogel.
Present.
Counselor Cameron.
Present.
Counselor Connell.
Present.
Counselor Cronin.
Present.
Counselor Junta.
Present.
Counselor Agumon.
Here.
Counselor Hartquist.
Present.
And Counsel President O'Brien.
Here.
Late file items. There are two late file items. The council see on your desk in order number two relative to Collins Street. It's in, will be taken up the regular agenda, order number two. And there's a mayor's update that we will have shortly. Mr. West, counsel?
Motion to waive the rules and accept late items.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Thank you. Thank you, public comment.
Ron Ziemba. Good evening to all of you. My name is Ron Ziemba, and I'm the candidate for the open position on the Newburyport Cultural Council. I've spoken to Mayor Holliday about it, and I've come away very interested in participating in this. I'm a native of Chicopee, Massachusetts. Grew up in that area, Western Mass, and graduated from Amherst College in nineteen sixty-four. Moved to Newburyport about two years ago to be close to my daughter as she was going through her second pregnancy. And love it, just love it, just love it. And I see this as a chance to, a real good chance, to make a difference in my new town. My previous, I'm retired now, retired in August of two thousand twelve. My previous, my business career included some brief stay in journalism, and then about five different large corporations for which I ran communications functions. That included, in two cases, that included the corporate contributions programs of these companies. So I have thorough familiarity with the idea of entertaining requests for funds, evaluating them, deciding on them, and then monitoring the results. So I think that's a pretty good qualification for the cultural council. I can take any questions you have now or at any other time, and I appreciate your consideration for my candidacy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Libby McGee.
I'm Libby McGee, and I'm a candidate for the zoning board of appeals position that's open, associate position. My background is in architecture and interior design. I have a small design firm in town. I worked for a large architecture firm on the West Coast before I moved here ten years ago. A friend mentioned that they thought I might be a good candidate for the spot. I think it's interesting, and I look forward to, you know, rounding out my experience and my resume and being a part of it.
Thank you.
Jeff Colvey?
I am Jeff Colvey. I am here. Should I pass these out first so we can have a point of reference to what we're going to discuss?
President, I still think they have a copy.
Okay, you do. Great. Okay. My father has a couple of parcels of property on Collins Street, one located at twenty-two, twenty-four, which is actually land as well. On the other side, we have twenty-eight Collins Street, another parcel of land, both are under agreement, waiting to close. And there's a driveway in between both parcels that we have used for fifty, sixty years to park four cars in. So what we have found out now is that that actual driveway is city right of way. So now we have the new buyers ready to come in. But what we thought we had off-street parking happens to be city property or a band. We're trying to get an abandonment or an easement so that can kind of come over to us. We've maintained the driveway for, since nineteen sixty-five, both driveways, and we'd like to have that kind of hurried up because we have a situation now where we have three closings depending on it, and all the buyers are ready and want to know what the situation is with the driveway. So we're trying to get a quick resolve to the situation. And that's what we do.
Thank you. Nick Erickson? We ask them?
Yes, hello. I would just like to briefly speak regarding resident-only parking on Ashland Street, at the bottom of Ashland Street, close to Phil and Sons Auto Shop. So just essentially, it's been a longstanding issue, and we feel that for the resolution to last, the one that has been voted on last year, it really needs to be resident-only parking, similar to the way that it's near the Energix Hospital. So essentially, kind of here to ask your support in making it resident-only parking. Thank you.
David Tennant?
Well, the last thing you need to hear is for me to repeat myself from two weeks ago. So I won't. I'll just appeal to you. Please find some way to make Lower Ashland Street resident-only parking. You'll do a great service to the neighbors, and you'll answer a public safety issue before it becomes a crisis. Thank you.
Rob Germanauer?
Thank you, Mr. Counsel President. Evening, members of the city council. Rob Germanauer to Ashland Street. I'd like to briefly acknowledge the passing of my great uncle, John Croshaw, Mr. John Croshaw, last Thursday. He was a World War II Navy veteran and a lifelong resident of the city. Having said that, I'm here to speak about the issue on Lower Ashland Street. Forty-seven years old, a nineteen eighty-four graduate of the high school in Newburyport. I've been associated with that neighborhood my entire life. Originally was Manson's Garage, Overland Expressions, Curtis Engine Repair, and then it was Chip's Auto. There was never an issue before that until Phil and Sons owned it. This has become sort of a personal issue for them, but not for me. It's a public safety issue, and it's just something that's gone far too long. Last city council session, the last year, we tried to get this corrected, and basically, we missed it on the two-hour resident part of it. So I'm not a big fan of resident parking only in the city. I think at some places it doesn't belong. In this particular instance, where Phil and Sons has their own off-street parking, that it's warranted. There's a very successful store at the top of Ashland Street who doesn't have their own off-street parking. A successful business at the bottom of Warren Street, no, none of their own off-street parking. Very successful pizza business, fifty years, at the bottom of Olive Street, none of their own parking. It wouldn't work in those scenarios. In this particular instance, where they have thirty of their own off-street parking spots, it's warranted. And, you know, I never moved into that neighborhood to pick a fight. You know, it's a business use in a residential neighborhood, and therefore the burden falls upon Phil and Sons in order to keep the peace. And, you know, I feel as though they've been using the street as an extension of their business. So I would specifically respectfully request a ten-zero vote for the city council to amend the resident-only two-hour parking to resident-only. Thank you for your time.
At the end of our, Bob Conlon, we'll have the mayor's call.
Evening, President O'Brien, members of the city council. It's a pleasure to be back, giving you a brief update since our last meeting. I wanted to thank all of the councilors who have submitted to either me or Peter Lombardi your top priorities for sidewalk repairs. We will be finalizing those decisions by the end of the week, and we'll be letting you know. As I'm sure all of you know, it was a exciting event last week at the community preservation committee's review of the high school stadium project, and we got a favorable vote for the one-point-five bonding so that we can, as you've heard me say numerous times, field space in our community is at all-time premium at a crisis point. And by turning this into a turf field, it expands multipurpose use and really makes a lot of sense going forward. So once we get the official award letter from the CPC, which I anticipate shortly, you can anticipate having the safe portion, the transfer from free cash before you at your, at your next meeting. I was also pleased that they also agreed to fund the high school project, as well as the phase-two of the soccer field for youth soccer. The remaining of the CPC applicants will be vetted over their next several meetings, and I anticipate that your full list of review for appropriation will be, and approval will come in early June. The senior community center is at ninety-five percent design. We have been working through tech meetings to iron out some issues regarding utilities and when the demolition of the building and timing with the opening of the school. So everything is moving forward very, very well with that project also. We are in the final phases of solidifying the FY fifteen budget, and obviously, that budget will be before you for your first meeting in May, and as it has been in the past. And so things are moving forward with that. We have less than a one percent increase on the city side. And as you know, we struggled. We are definitely in a very bad situation with our school budget this year, and through the great work of our finance team, had been able to come up with an increase of eight-point-two-five percent from the city side to be able to meet the school's request of a ten-point-one percent increase this year. Our annual audit was completed. A full copy of the management letter, as well as the audit itself, by Melanson Heath, is available in the city's clerk office, and I encourage you to read that. We are encouraged by overall the movement and stability and progress we have made with our finances in the city. We still are carrying a concern about the reconciliation of the general ledger on, as one of the significant findings that we have been carrying for a couple of years that we need to address, that we will continue to work on. The issues at Water Main Break that happened out on Plum Island that are in the final phases of repairing both the water and sewer lines out there, they should be done in the next day or so. The Jordi Biding, I thought, did a wonderful job as senior project manager, presenting the schematic design of the Harbor Masters new transient boda facility. I think it was well-received at the Harbor Commission last Thursday night. Woodyer Bridge Project, neighbors and butters are having issues as they have changed their work schedule to six nights, twenty-four-seven, and we're getting some, obviously, concerns from butters because it's, they're going to try very hard to keep evening noise down, but it's difficult when you're working on a major construction project. So I've been in conversation with them, and we're making attempts to try and address some of the noise issues out there. Also, in your update, I informed you that through the state, our Common Backyards Grant Program, we received a two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant for a spray park, which is, you know, one of these sort of sprinklers, if you will, a big sprinkler that kids will be running through, and it'll be recycled water. And we're looking at Cashman Park as a possible site for placing that, so we'll be working, working on that piece. And of course, that will fall under our Parks and Parks Commission to work on. Youth Services, I thought, did a wonderful job, even though I was unable to stay for the full presentation, presenting their annual survey results. They alternate between the Youth Risk Behavior Survey or the Search Institute, and the youth did a great job presenting the results of that data. In the update, which will also be posted on the city website, will be a link for you to review the data findings this year. Also, on Thursday, I have been invited to speak at the Massachusetts Sustainable Communities and Campuses Conference with other municipal leaders to talk about all the wonderful things that we're doing in our community under the leadership of Molly Ettenborough and our Energy Advisory Council, so I'm looking forward to that. Last week, we had Reverend Liz Walker, who came and did a wonderful job for the annual fundraiser lunch for the Y. And finally, the, I just would like to request your support of a transfer that I put before you for eight thousand dollars as the first payment towards a lease-to-own option for a van for, to be shared between youth sports and youth services, particularly the baseball team. As you know, we, they are short a baseball field at, because of the Brezina Hand School project. They have rented space at Pipes, Pipe Stave Hill in Newbury, and that is difficult for freshmen and JV to get to that field for practice. So this would be, go a long way in terms of helping the team being able to get to practice and games over there. So thank you for your time. I appreciate the opportunity to give you a update of what's been going on over the last couple of weeks, and certainly would entertain any questions, should you have them. Thank you very much.
Consent agenda, Mr. President, consists this evening of the approval of the minutes for March thirty-first. There are two transfers. There's a five-thousand-dollar transfer to the city clerk for ordinance recertification that's in for approval. And the second transfer is eight thousand dollars for the transport van that is removed at the request of Counselor Hirsar. That'll be taken up in the regular agenda. There are seven communications. First is retirement board meeting regarding, a notice regarding their COLA increase on May twenty-ninth, two thousand fourteen. That's receiving file. There's an oregano outdoor seating renewal in for approval. Middle Street Foods, outdoor seating approval, that's also a renewal. That's been changed from license and permits to approve. Port Taxis, vehicles for hire, that's a renewal also in for approval, subject to vehicular inspection by the police department. There's Bryan Outdoor Seating Renewal Approval, SEIA Outdoor Seating Renewal Approval. And seventh is a letter to DOT from Counselor Cronin regarding the Stury Avenue signage clutter. That's a receiving file. There are four appointments. First reading, Arthur M. Levine, forty-three B Kent Street, Disabilities Commission until April thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. Ronald S. Ziemba, fifty-eight Lime Street, Unit One, till April thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. Third, Thomas P. Capalupo, Capaluso, excuse me, five, Sunset Drive, Newbury, as a special police officer. And Libby McGee, two-sixty Water Street, to become an associate member of the zoning board of appeals until April thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. That's the consent agenda this evening as amended.
I'd like to remove items five and six, please.
Just communication?
Yes, please.
Any else? Motion to adjourn.
Motion approved as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move on. That's going to be a transfer. I have the transfer number two, which reads, "From Free Cash, eight thousand dollars to the Youth Services Transport Van," says Youth Transport Van, excuse me, "eight thousand dollars due to the ongoing school building projects. We have displaced field space used by student athletes. Baseball field space has been rented in West Newbury, and a van needed to transport JV and freshman team players. Van will be shared by Youth Services."
I, I move, I move to refer to Budget and Finance.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to approve this tonight. I just have too many questions about it. I thank Peter Lombardi in the mayor's office for sharing his thoughts with me yesterday and today. There might even be more information, which I might ask you in a moment. Kind of as background behind this, the biggest question in my mind, Mr. President, is the transfer detail, the request on the transfer form and the memo on the attached page, which this clerk just read, is referring to a transfer of eight thousand dollars from Free Cash for a lease-to-own van, shared between Youth Services and the school department's athletic department. I've since heard from Peter that this is not the total cost of the van, but rather, the total cost is twenty-five thousand dollars, and we would be seeing, or someone would be seeing, an additional seventeen thousand dollar cost next year. I don't know where that money would be coming from, if it would be coming from the city's free cash, whether it come from anything in the school department, I don't know. My understanding is for the cost of gas and maintenance, this would be coming out of a combination of youth fees and athletic department fees. The memo makes mention of a, of it being used by the JV and freshman teams and by Youth Services for summer programming. Peter confirmed with me, and I thank him for this, that the youth department would only use it in the summertime. The baseball team would use it in the spring. Field hockey would use it in the fall. And additionally, the Parks Department might use it during some weekends for different tours. So we're, we would still have in approximately forty hours a week of this van just sitting vacant during the business day, the school day. And then I've, I, kind of my other question, beyond who's paying for the seventeen thousand dollars next year, is I must remind you, Mr. President, and the council, that I'm on record since last fall as to only approve free cash transfers that meet DOR recommendations. And I have here a one-page I printed tonight from the DOR's website, just to highlight two sentences, Mr. President, as I quote, "As a nonrecurring revenue source, a prudent use of free cash would be to fund one-time expenditures, a capital purpose, or to replenish out of the reserves." The DOR continues by saying, as I quote, "DOR also recommends that free cash not be available to supplement current-year departmental operations." I must pause and ask whether this transfer request of eight thousand dollars is a one-time expenditure. I don't know. That's why I suggested go to committee for more discussion. If we can get some answers tonight, I'm more than willing to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I'm not going to vote to refer this to committee. Baseball season is moving on, and as we may recall, we did kind of screw baseball players in Newburyport by taking fields away, and I think we should just move on this tonight. The members of Budget and Finance are here. To me, free cash, nonrecurring, a lease-to-own seems nonrecurring to me. That's not, you know, there will be a need to find the seventeen thousand dollars, but that will be nonrecurring as well. And it's a capital purpose. I mean, it's a capital expenditure. You know, I don't recall, you know, this kind of a purchase coming up, you know, in a, in a quick fashion like we're dealing with tonight, but I think we can just, you know, Mr. Lombardi's here, and I'm sure he can fill in some of the blanks. But I think, you know, we owe it to the baseball players to try to move this along, and so I'd certainly be supportive of it.
I would urge you not to vote to refer this to Budget and Finance. I recall last, last fall, I attended the, the public meeting on the full fields. And parents of baseball players came again and again. They said, "Look at this year. Students have been carpooling. It's perhaps unsafe. There are liability issues having high school players in the car. It's baseball season now." You know, ordinarily, I think this, we would have preferred to have had this a month ago. Perhaps somewhat understandable that a month ago, no one in the city thought that winter would ever end, and so who's going to be playing baseball this year? But it's, it's late, and yet, I, I think, I think that concern over the lateness is trumped by the need to provide a van for these baseball players. In addition, Youth Services would be renting a vehicle this summer anyway, and, and so this is, this is a good time to do it, and I would urge that you not refer it to Budget and Finance.
Any further discussion, Mr. Lombardi? Counsel Agumon.
Yes, Mr. President. I just wanted to direct some questions through the chair to Mr. Lombardi, just, you know. So the eight thousand dollars, I assume we're not committed to go through with the purchase. We could drop it if we don't come up with the seventeen thousand at the end, or is it a commitment?
Yeah, what, what the city would be signing is essentially a lease-to-own contract. So it would be, and just to clarify, it's actually a three-year lease agreement. The initial payment would be eight thousand dollars. There'd be subsequent payments of approximately fifty-five hundred dollars in the next two fiscal years. I've talked to Andy Egmont, Youth Services Director, and they essentially need this second van because the schools and Youth Services already share a single van and have had that arrangement for the past year and a half. But for the second van, Youth Services would be able to cover twenty-five percent of those two fifty-five hundred dollar payments, bringing the cost to the operating budget at around four thousand dollars. So Youth Services would cover essentially using the vehicle during the summertime, which is when they need it, and would be renting a van anyways. And then we would incorporate the four thousand dollars on the operating, into the operating budget to cover the costs of the lease payments for the next two fiscal years.
But it, just one more question, just to understand. So I get that, but we're not obligated to come up with the four thousand. We would, it would be, I'm not advocating we should renege on the lease, because if we're going to pour in that much money, we want to finish out the contract. But my question is, if by, are we tying our hands? Are we committed to that four thousand at the end?
Yes, it's a binding lease agreement. Yes.
Okay. So it's like an installment contract.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, instead of monthly payments, they're annual payments.
Thank you.
Counsel Vogel?
I'd also like to direct questions if I may, the chair. So how may I understand, what's this, is the, is the school then also picking up part of the tab?
So the, the current arrangement with Youth Services and the schools, they, they split a van fifty-fifty, and they split those, the cost of the annual payment cost fifty-fifty as well, because that's what the use is. And they also cover any ancillary cost, fuel and so forth, fifty-fifty. Under, with this new van, the city would incorporate the four thousand dollars extra into the school budget under the transportation line item to cover the costs, the additional costs of the vehicle.
Okay. And at the, and you say it's a lease to purchase, what, the total purchase cost of the van?
Is, I believe, just over nineteen thousand dollars. Ethan Manning took care of nineteen, nineteen thousand five hundred.
And so then it, so those are the three payments right there?
Yep.
Thank you.
Further discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. If I could just follow up one question, I'm, my mouth is a little fuzzy. Saying nineteen thousand five hundred total, so eight thousand dollars if we approve this tonight, plus four thousand dollars going into the operating budget, plus fifty-five hundred dollars covered by Youth Services, if I heard you?
No.
No.
Four thousand dollars going to operating budget, and Youth Services will become about fifteen hundred each year.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Lot of numbers. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
What's on the floor?
I'm sorry.
Motion to refer.
The motion to refer to Budget and Finance is the motion, Congressman. Counsel Hirsar?
No.
Counsel Kinsey? Absent. Counsel Tontar?
No.
Counsel Vogel?
No.
Counsel Cameron?
No.
Counsel Connell?
No.
Counsel Cronin?
No.
Counsel Junta?
No.
Counsel Agumon?
No.
Counsel Hartquist?
No.
Counsel President O'Brien? Nope. I'll take another motion.
Motion approved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Present.
First was Counsel Cameron, second was? Thank you. For the communications? Number five? Number five, yep. Is the outdoor seating application? Yes. By Bryan, twenty-five State Street. Good guess.
Motion to approve five and six collectively.
Second. Six is SEIA's thirty-eight State Street. Discussion, Counsel Cronin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just when I went over these, I noticed that all the other ones that we've already approved in the consent agenda had insurance certificates with them, and these do not. And I guess I would either ask why... And I guess I would either ask why, or maybe put in an amendment to say that we approve these with, subject to the providing of, of an insurance binder.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That would be appointment, second reading. Yep. The second reading of the following appointments. Matthew Simon, 62 Monroe Street, Havrell, as sergeant, Newburyport Police Department. Next, Charles Eaton, 20 Main Street, Southampton, New Hampshire, same sergeant, Newburyport Police Station. Next, Richard A. Eaton, 4 Horton Street, Newburyport, the Newburyport Trust Fund until March 1, 2017. Suzanne F. Gallagher, 3 Garnet Street, to the Board of Registars, March 31, 2017. Crispin S. Miller, 1 Parker Ridge West, tree commission until November 1, 2017. The reappearance following, too, Judy Timman, 39 Lime Street, the Newburyport Public Housing Trust, until April 1, 2016. Duncan LaBey, 4 Ferry Road, to the Newburyport Zoning Board of Appeals, until February 1, 2015. And that is the appointments. We'll take a motion for, for them collectively?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We need a roll call. We do. City clerk give me his eyes and back of his head, so we can do a roll call. Counsel Hissok?
Yes.
Counsel Tanta?
Here, yes.
You're here?
Counsel Vogel?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes, and here.
Counsel Connell?
Yes.
Counsel Cronin?
Yes.
Counsel Junta?
Yes.
Counsel Ogilvy?
Yes.
Counsel Hartquist?
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien?
Yes.
Move on to orders. Order number one. Order number one is dated April 15. You'd like me to read it, Mr. President? It is? Yes. That pursuant to General Laws 40, Sections 15 and 15A, City Council of City of Newburyport, hereby designate the former Kelly School as surplus property, no longer needed by the city for such purposes and for other purposes, based upon the anticipated relocation of the Newburyport Youth Services to the Brown School, and further, consistent with the April 7, 2014 vote of the school committee, that the council hereby transfers the care, custody, management, and control of said building and the land thereon, which stands 151 High Street, assesses map 35 lot 161, to the mayor for the purposes of further conveyance on such terms and conditions, and for such consideration as the mayor deems appropriate. Provided that a condition of the sale or lease of said property shall be duly recorded, preservation restriction for the protection of the historic facades of the property of said building, and further, that proceeds from the sale or lease of the property be used at the direction of the mayor for either supplementing the school department budget off of the purposes of funding capital improvements required by the Brown School necessary for the conversion of this facility to function in part as the Newburyport Youth Services facility. It is acknowledged herein that any further disposition, meaning lease or sale, of the Brown School will be subject to transfer and approvals by both the school committee and the city council, pending relocation of students and faculty to the new Breznerhand School, submitted jointly, Councilors Ed Cameron and Megan Kinsey. Motion to approve?
Second.
Counsel Cameron?
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is, has been, you know, certainly an ongoing discussion within the community, and it's, it's not just been a discussion about the Kelly School, obviously, the Brown School and its, its use and future is part of this. I was not on the council when the Kelly School closed. I'm sure we might even have members here who attended the Kelly School, so I know, you know, it has a deep meaning for many of us in the community, but I know as a council, last year, we did look at coming up with the money to do the facade work, which was going to be at least $400,000, and there's a whole host of structural issues in the building. The second floor hasn't been used in years, and that, that discussion, I think, prompted the city to, to take a look at finding another use for it and, and using the funds for, for other pressing capital needs or for the school budget. So I was at the school committee meeting last week where they did approve this unanimously. There, there wasn't any discussion at that point. Sure that had been happened, had happened at other meetings, but, you know, it, it's a heartfelt thing to do, but I, I think it's the right thing to do, and certainly makes sense to, to help youth services in the Brown School and maintain that as a, as a community resource.
Counsel Vogel?
Thank you, Mr. President. I concur. I, I fully understand the need to move this along and the need to put these, the services into the Brown School and so on and so forth. My concern of approving this right here on the spot without involving the council any further is, I think that there's a tremendous amount of discussion that could go on, or at least some in-depth discussion there goes on about whether or not it's proper to sell it, whether it's proper to lease it, be it a 99-year lease or whatever. There's all kinds of questions around what it's going to look like, who's going to do what with it, that I think needs, or should have, council and community input around it to some degree. I would like to see this moved on to appropriate committee. I'm not exactly sure which one, but I think I'd like to put it somewhere so that there can be a little bit more in-depth discussion around it. There's a lot of verbiage here that is kind of airy, and I'd like to see it a little bit more discussed.
Counsel Cronin?
I won't speak long in this, other than I, after reading this, I concur with Counsel Vogel. I, I just think that we should just look at this, and as Counsel Cameron said, there was probably discussion at, at school committee. I think there should be some sort of a discussion here as well, and, and I think finally, we probably will sell it, but I think that we should have our own opportunity to vet property that is under our control, which is the purview of the council.
Because it's, in real estate, it's not a school anymore.
Right. It's, and I, as I understand it, the property is under the purview of the city council.
Counsel Ogilvy?
Yeah, Mr. President, I hesitate to rise because I, I'm new to the council, and I don't know how previous transactions like this have gone. I, I agree with Counselor Cronin that it is, seems momentous. You know, this is city property of some note. The building is well-known to Newburyporters. On the other hand, I, you know, the mayor needs to go out and negotiate, so I, I guess I, I really have a question. First, is the word "conveyance" meant to only authorize the mayor to sell? It was raised by Counselor Vogel that it could be disposed of another way. I'm not saying it will. You know, it may be that we just have to sell it, and that's the way it is, but, but it, it, "conveyance," to me denotes a grant deed or a quitclaim deed, whereas down at the bottom, when we're talking about the Brown School, there's lease or sale. So I just, I throw that out there. And then also, you know, depending on, I have no sense of how much money the property will, will gain, but just imagine for the sake of argument that, that it were, it would, it would bring in quite a lot of money. It may be, it may be, again, and I hesitate because I'm new, that the city council would want to see the term sheet. That's all. You know, not, not tie the hands of the mayor to negotiate, but give a, give an approval to the term sheet. So those are the things I'm balancing in my mind. Thank you.
Mr. Port?
Thank you. If I could just clarify on the, the point about the conveyance, that sentence further on goes on to read that, provided that a condition of the sale or lease of said property, so that is actually covered for both facilities, even though the Brown School is mentioned here, it's not the subject of this particular order. The concern, of course, that we have is the building continues to deteriorate, so the faster we're able to get it out there on the market and make sure that someone who can afford to put the improvements into it can do so, the better for the building. We understand internally that there's no other viable municipal use for it, certainly not a school, but given that we've had a lot of discussions about any other viable use there, we don't see that. Our goal is to, to make sure that we can get it out there as quickly as possible and see what the options are. Of course, you know, we have to review them when they come in.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd, you know, I, I think a couple of weeks, I'm not sure which committee it would be. I mean, I think that would be fine. I mean, it, you know, I mean, I just basically said this is a kind of a big deal, and I think, you know, without properly vetting it through the council, I think that probably would be a mistake, so I'd, I'd be in favor of withdrawing my motion to approve and referring it to, I, I don't know if it's.
Planted.
Planning and development.
General government?
We don't have anything controversial, hopefully after tonight, so this will give us something to chew on.
So you would do, who, the second, was that withdrawn? Your second, I have to agree with.
I think it was Counsel Junta.
And I'll second.
Yes.
Where is it going?
Motion to refer to planning and development.
Second.
Second. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Late file? That pursuant to General Laws 82, Sections 21 and 32A, the City Council of City of Newburyport, hereby abandon and discontinue permanently the vacant land between 24 and 28 Collins Street, which is a portion of the Collins Street. The public way is shown on a plan, a copy of which is on file. What it's really saying is will be on file, because we don't have it yet. That's okay. And then, anything more, Mr. President? No. Need a motion? Move to refer to planning and development?
Second.
Thank you. You heard from Mr. Clothe earlier in the day, I would, I would, earlier in the meeting, I would just point your attention to the plot map that indicates that this portion of what's apparently Collins Street, where Collins Street turns sharply to the left, is a piece of land, one of those bizarre little pieces of land that we have in the city, that by all appearances looks like it's part of the property at 2830, and indeed has been used as, for parking for over 50, 60 years. I'm not sure how it happened, all right, but it is not part of, of that property, and this would be the first step toward declaring it a surplus, or declaring it that it is not a public way. I want to thank, thank Andy Port. There's some lack of clarity as to whether or not it actually is owned by the city, or there are fee rights by the abuddies to it, so the language in this motion is, covers both possibilities. So I would urge planning and development to move expeditiously on this.
Counsel Vogel?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the opposite feeling about this. I think we ought to approve it, but I know we can't. The, the question I do have, though, if I may, the, the requester.
He's left the.
Oh.
Left the building.
Okay, well, then maybe I can't get an answer. I was just, was wondering, you know, he's got closings and so on and so forth, I guess I would just urge the planning and development to move quickly.
They shouldn't have waited so long, you know? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? It's the second reading of ordinance number one. It's the demo control ordinance, so-called DCO. It has Sections A through G, determinations, it goes on for seven pages. It has had a first reading and was published. Well, keep reading then. You like me to read it?
Motion approved.
Motion approved, second.
End discussion. Roll call. Motion approved. EC and the second was?
Counsel Cronin first, and I second.
Thank you very much. I gotta get better. Counsel Hissok?
Yes.
Counsel Tanta?
Yes.
Counsel Vogel?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Counsel Connell?
Yes.
Counsel Cronin?
Yes.
Counsel Junta?
Yes.
Counsel Ogilvy?
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance number two. Again, that is a second reading. It was published. It is known as DOD. It is the Downtown Overlay District. It has Sections A through H. I should mention on both of them that incorporates the map that was brought out last time, and it goes on for a number of pages. Would you like me to read?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call? Counsel Hissok?
Yes.
Counsel Tanta?
Yes.
Counsel Vogel?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Counsel Connell?
Yes.
Counsel Cronin?
Yes.
Counsel Junta?
Yes.
Counsel Ogilvy?
Yes.
Counsel Hartquist?
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance three. Division four, stop intersections. Section 13-136, the following streets are designated as stop intersections, and vehicles traveling thereon shall come to a complete stop before entering the intersection. Add Story Avenue westbound traffic at 56 feet from the entrance to Route 113. Said sign to be opposite Virginia Lane, submitted Larry G. Junta.
Motion to refer to public safety.
Second. Discussion? Counsel Junta?
This is an, an intersection that, although it says Story Ave. here, which is official, most people know it as Story Brook and Virginia, and we've had some privately-owned bushes there for a long time that block the view of the folks from Virginia Lane, so they don't see the oncoming cars coming. So the idea here is to relocate the existing stop sign on Story Ave. to create a two-way stop, so both the cars at Virginia and on Story Brook Lane have to stop, and we also have the DPW trim those bushes, but the stop sign still needs to be relocated.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Move on to ordinance number four. Article one in general, section 7-4, annual master box connection fee. Each fire alarm user shall, honor before July 1 of each year, remit to the city treasurer collector a connection fee of $300 for each master box connection to the municipal fire alarm system, submitted Counsel Edward C. Cameron.
Motion to refer jointly to public safety and budget and finance?
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Counsel Arndt? Counsel Junta? You stole the draw.
I just was wondering if I, we could just get a brief explanation on what, what this is.
Thank you, Mr. President. There isn't a, actually, there isn't much of an attached memo. I think Mr. Lombardi could explain this a little bit better than I could if, if that's in accordance with the, the president, but basically, this is a lot, you know, within the, the ballpark of what other communities are charging for this. To, to have a business wired through one of the regular conventional alarm companies is usually quite a bit higher cost, so if the city was doing this and charging this fee, we, you know, we would bring in some revenue, which I believe we're, we've been talking about using this for a fire truck and, and a lease arrangement, so this would provide some revenue to the city on the public safety side and, and actually be a deal for, for businesses compared to what a, a regular alarm companies are charging.
Just to follow up and give a little more detail, talking to the fire department, there are about a little over 300 businesses that this would apply to, to connect their, their fire alarm master box to the department. As Counsel Cameron mentioned, every other community in the area charges a fee for this, ranging from $200 on the low end to just over $300 on the high end. They average around $275 to $300, and it's an annual service fee that would be paid to the city. Estimated revenues are projected around $100,000 annually, and that would help offset the, the cost of, of the, paying the annual installments on the, for the two new fire engines.
Thank you. Counsel Connell? Mr. Lombardi? Excuse the chair, Mr. Lombardi. What services are these individuals getting once the hookup has already, already occurred for those $300 a year?
Yeah, it's essentially a monitoring service, so it's the same thing, same kind of monitoring service that they'd get if they signed up with ADT or a private monitoring service. So they would still have the option to do that, as they do now, and it just, there's just a slight delay.[1781.53] just a slight delay. You know, it essentially calls that private service, and then they contact the fire department to notify the fire department.
So, let me follow. So these fire alarm boxes are monitored at the fire station?
They're currently being monitored, yes.
So that's an active...
It's an active monitor, yeah. Basically, we're providing a service for no fee and have been for a long time, and every other community actually charges a fee for it, and we're looking to bring in a comparable fee.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, move on to committee items, budget and finance.
Move to remove item number three, free cash, $40,300 to veterans' benefit?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Counsel Tontar?
Mr. President, budget and finance supported this unanimously. If you notice that the city has had a higher-than-usual expenses in this area this year, that's why the request for supplemental funds, and the city has reimbursed seventy-five percent of that in next year's cherry sheet. The committee felt that we owe this to our veterans and their families.
Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Anything else coming out? Counsel, anything else coming up?
No.
General Government? Counsel Vogel?
Motion to remove number one from committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion, please.
To approve.
Second.
Discussion, Counsel Vogel?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. In conversation, the General Government Committee met and discussed this, and I guess previously, this similar type of arrangement had been already approved by city council in the past, and then it fell apart as a result of some of the communities dropping out and so on and so forth. So this is sort of a bring-back, if you will, and Mr. Lombardi, you can correct me if I get this wrong. So this is a bring-back, and it's a great benefit to all the surrounding communities. It's substantial savings for us, and answered all of my financial questions, and if you have any, I can certainly answer those.
It's with Merrimack and Amesbury.
For Merrimack and Amesbury.
In Newburyport. Any discussion? Counsel Agaman?
Mr. President, just one question. I don't want to look a gift horse in the mouth, I'm all for this, but I noticed in Schedule A, there are twice as many veterans that are getting services in Amesbury than are in Newburyport. I just wanted to know how the General Government...
We anticipated that question, and Mr. Lombardi is very anxious to answer it.
As the council president referenced, essentially, we looked at doing it both ways and decided on doing it based on population because those other numbers fluctuate year to year. In fact, they've changed since we brought this to get approved by the council with the five communities last fall. They've actually changed pretty significantly. So basing it on that number, where it changes so frequently, wasn't something that made sense in terms of the stability of a long-term agreement.
Thank you. Counsel Garrett?
Thank you, Mr. President. Certainly, I support this. Just, this ties in with the previous transfer. It's been very interesting, the number of veterans that we serve here in Newburyport through our Veterans Services Officer really fluctuates. We've had occasions, I think it might have been last fiscal year, where we transferred substantial money to cover a perceived deficit, and two months later, Kevin Hunt was giving us money back because it, you know, so it really is a kind of a cyclical ebb and flow that doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. But I think this is a great example of regionalization. Everybody gains from this. There really aren't any winners or losers between the three communities, so I think it makes a lot of sense.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
For motion approved, the intermunicipal agreement of veteran services. Counselor Hissah.
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor Agaman.
Yes.
Counselor Harkwitz.
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien.
Yes.
Joint education. Anybody?
Nothing at this time.
Counsel Kinsey's not saying anything, so I guess there's nothing, so. Okay, license and permits. Oh, Counsel Harkwitz, go ahead.
Motion to remove number five movable sign by Grand Trunk.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion?
Motion to approve, please.
Second to motion.
Turn cell phones off, please, I appreciate it, it's the rule of city council. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. License and permits, met with Angela, the owner of Grand Trunk. She owns, Grand Trunk is a cheese and wine shop that's on Pleasant Street. She is interested in putting an A-frame in front of her store, but unfortunately, there's not a ton of room. So she's requesting to put an A-frame in front, at the end of Inn Street, where you hit Pleasant Street, next to Pandora's Box. She has asked Pandora's Box for permission to have it right near her store, and they're in agreement with it. A couple things, this is actually Grand Trunk's Plan B, not their Plan A, and I say that because eventually, hopefully, maybe in the fall, they're going to be coming back to us because they want to erect a sign, a pole that has, similar to what the Tannery has, the pole with all the different store names on it, at the end of Inn Street and Pleasant Street. So in the meantime, she would like us to help her with her business by allowing her to place her A-frame at this location, and this A-frame is not your typical plastic A-frame. It's going to be made out of wood and slates. It's quite beautiful, actually. So it passed in committee, two in favor and one absent. So I urge your approval of this Plan B.
Any further discussion? Counsel Hissah.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could direct a question to the committee chair. Is there a schematic here showing the placement? My only concern or question is if it can just be placed in such a manner that it doesn't block visibility of the bike rack.
It's going to be near, so if you're going up Inn Street and Pandora's Box is on your left, the bike rack goes like this, it's going to be in front of it. There's plenty of room. So you have the bike rack, and then you have about twenty feet before you hit the sidewalk of Pleasant Street.
Okay.
So it's going to be right up against, well, not up against, but right near Pandora's Box. So there's plenty of room for the bikes.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Motion to approve? All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Anything else coming out?
No, Mr. President.
Thank you. Public safety?
Yes, Mr. President. Move to remove item one, stop intersections.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Discussion? Counsel Cronin?
This is more or less going to be a three-pronged discussion. This came by way of the Traffic Advisory Committee, and the first part is after much discussion, it was decided that we would try to make Greenleaf Street and Pond Street, which is that intersection right near CVS, into a four-way stop sign. Because there's a lot of confusion there, people stop the yellow flashing light, people run the red light, it's confusing. So in our due diligence to make it a four-way stop, we found that the existing signage there is not consistent with what our city ordinance reflects. So therefore, you have in front of you the exist, the change in ordinance that would make it into a four-way stop by just adding the stop sign on the westbound side of Greenleaf Street. And then the third prong was, while discussing at the Traffic Advisory Committee and talking about Pond Street, I was researching the city ordinances, and Green Street is alphabetically right under Greenleaf Street, or vice versa. And when I looked at the bottom of Green Street, there's no ordinance for the stop signs that are currently down there or the flashing light. So what this ordinance is, is basically just codifying what has been down there for the last fifty years. And I urge you to approve it, and it came through three-nothing in committee.
Counsel Cameron?
Okay, I thought I was clear on this, but I just, let me try to rephrase what I think you said. So what this is going to amount to practically is Greenleaf and Pond will be four-way stops, so whichever way you're coming, you're going to need to stop. And the part about Green Street, is that reflected in this?
The bottom one.
The bottom one here.
There's two.
There's two of them in there. Oh, okay. Okay, great, gotcha, thanks.
Counsel Hissah?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could direct a question to the chair. The existing flashing yellow light is the plan, and I don't know, is the plan that when the stop signs are all erected, that it's a four-way stop, that the flasher will be turned off?
That is correct. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Motion approved, thirteen dash one thirty-six. Counselor Hissah.
Yes.
Counsel Tontar.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counsel Junta.
Yes.
Counsel Agaman.
Yes.
Counsel Harkwitz.
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien.
Yes.
First reading.
First reading published. More money. Anything else, Counsel?
Motion to remove item two, Ashland Street, resident park.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Go ahead.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion? Counsel Tontar?
Mr. President, the council last December passed an ordinance to place signage at the end of Ashland Street. It was the culmination of ten years of, as Mr. Tierney indicated, of efforts by the residents at the end of Ashland Street to have some relief from cars that were worked on at the station at the bottom of that street from parking, blocking their view coming out of their driveway, and also causing potential public safety problem at the bottom of Ashland Street. The residents thought, when that ordinance passed, it was, they had won an ordinance that would have given them resident-only parking. There was some confusion about it. What was put in place was a two-hour parking limit. Now, if you have a repair shop, all right, that is moving cars in and out, a two-hour limit, all right, on parking on the street is not a problem to them because they can keep moving the cars around, because that's what they do. So the residents came back to me late winter and asked if we could get resident-only parking. It was a unanimous vote out of the Public Safety Committee to support it, and I would ask that you support it as well. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counsel Hissah.
Yes.
Counsel Tontar.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Connell.
Yes.
Counsel Cronin.
Yes.
Counsel Junta.
Yes.
Counsel Agaman.
Yes.
Counsel Harkwitz.
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes, a first reading, order published.
Ting-ting-ting. Public utilities.
Nothing to make.
Rules committee.
Nothing to report.
Good of the order. Counsel Connell.
I believe we passed by a neighbor of the city's services. So the good of the order, the neighborhood and city services committee and committee on license and permits was planning to host a continuation of the meeting that we had convened two weeks ago to discuss the use of thin-film plastic bags. Because many of the questions that you asked and members of the public asked us, we are unable to respond to it this time, we decided that it would be prudent to postpone that meeting about two weeks hence to Thursday, the first of May, seven o'clock, and we will post it as such. I just wanted to notify the members, thank you for your participation in the first meeting. You asked good questions, we want to give you a good answer. And to the public, we apologize for the inconvenience if they had planned to attend tomorrow night, but it would not have been a productive meeting if we didn't have answers to the questions they asked. So we're going to move that meeting forward to the first of May, and beg your indulgence for the inconvenience.
Seven o'clock. Counsel Cameron, was anything coming out of planning? I'm sorry.
No.
Nope. Good of the order, anything else? I'd just like to have, you know, as the president, you know, my job is to have the agenda, and when the agenda is presented to me, we have, the city clerk calls me up, and, you know, lately I'm getting a lot of surprises on the agenda, you know. I think it's common courtesy that you would let the president at least know that you're putting something on the agenda. Some of your councils do, some you don't, you know. I think it's common courtesy to let the president know you're putting something on the agenda. It would be common courtesy to let the president know if you're going to be not attending a meeting or late for meetings. Some you do, some you don't. I'd just like to make everything transparent so we know what's going on, and I hate surprises,